And he thought there was another one also in the county that is. So my information is inaccurate in regards to profit and nonprofit nursing homes in Mitchell County. But the main topic of that, of my topic, was that regardless if they're a profit or nonprofit nursing home, we have abilities to help them if they have a building project and resources to move in that direction. So just wanted to clarify that.
I just want to say I also received multiple emails, phone calls, et cetera, and there are two. It's both Faith Home and the Stacyville Visitation, or the Stacyville Nursing Home, right there in Stacyville, that are nonprofit in Mitchell County.
No, he thought that there was actually another one other than that, so that if that's the case, there's three.
Yeah, there's two. There's two. Yeah.
Department head.
Good morning, everyone. Just a quick update on a few things. I had a meeting with Public Health on this last Friday. I think it was very valuable, very good to set some plans going forward, so I'm very encouraged by that. We have a copier. It's the copier that used to sit out at the CSS building, which is on ours. It's still under lease. They're asking around $6,000 to get out of that lease, so we're really trying to find a home for it for that amount of time. So I don't know. I've been talking with department heads and everything who wants it, and I haven't had a lot of people bite on actually wanting the device. So finding any sort of home whatsoever for it is what I'm looking for. So yeah, just have to keep trying to find who's ended up wanting it, or we can just buy it out. That's really our two different options. I know they talked with Nicole about some sort of out of business or out of funding thing, but that didn't really seem to, seem to manifest itself. We were kind of told that if a government agency loses funding, then we'd be able to get out of the remainder of the lease, but that appears not to be the case. Any questions on the copier?
So, so I had the understanding that it was like 4,000 or 4,200 to buy out, which would be the equivalent of the 143 times about the two and a half years left on the lease.
Yeah, I was rounding on it. I guess I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
The full number, but yeah, that sounds about right.
And no other department needed an additional copier?
No, no one said so.
It just seems odd that the county social services is not part of the Mitchell County envelope, and they had the contract, why we would be hooked with that?
Yeah, I totally understand that, and I totally agree, but at this point, I don't know, Aaron, if that's something. I've had the point where lawyers, when it comes to, when it comes to that contract, I've pushed every button that I'm able to push, but I totally agree with you. It shouldn't be done.
They use Mitchell County Social Service name, which is not a thing. So that shouldn't have.
On the contract. You don't need a copy, do you, Ryan?
I don't know. I'll sneak into your office if I need to have here.
Out of curiosity, is the, is the lease on it already paid for for the year, and we're just trying to use it up until it's complete, or?
No, it's paid monthly.
It's, it's a large amount of copies, and it actually has about two and a half years left on the, on the lease, unfortunately.
Yeah.
How much is it per month?
143.
I was gonna say 150.
Make sure you talk about.
They put a drum in mine, and it works good, so.
I suggest that we table this for another month and see if we can't follow up with them again, and, and note that, you know, Mitchell County Social Services is no longer funded through the state here, and so it would be a, I imagine they probably have the same thing with other entities or other counties.
The new, last one, the new IVMI server, which was our solution server arrived, and is sitting in the, sitting in the server room as of now. I'm waiting for them to schedule when that whole process is going to begin. What'll generally happen with that is they'll set it all up, I'll put it into the rack and plug it in, and then everything can be done that way. I don't expect anyone to be on site to do it, which I do that with all sorts of servers. It's the kind of way that it's done. I have not heard any update from IBM when that'll, when that process will go. At this point, it's not solutions, it's IBM. That's just the rest of the configuration.
Is the phones this week?
We, I talked with Laura, and we decided to push to the next week because of pristine and some doing to be able to move those phones over at the same time, so there's not a huge gap between when we do the training and when the new phones come in. That was something I talked to Laura about, and it ended up being fine and make a lot more sense.
So that was after our Friday meeting?
Yeah, I, I thought over the weekend, and you know how we talked about they didn't want to move over till one of their staff members was trained. There could have easily been a two or three week gap between when that happened. So my thought process was, we don't want to do the training, have that huge of a gap, and then throw the phones in. This'll allow us to have the training and the phones happen at a lot closer time.
So is that alternate date set up? That's my first question, with the vendor.
It is with Mike, yep.
And will he be here both in the morning and in the afternoon, so we can take full advantage of him?
Same, same thing, same thing.
And it wouldn't have been possible to do the, like, some of the county office individuals on the 17th?
Well, I don't.
Get them out of the way.
Yeah, and then they're even further away from when they actually get the phones. So generally, when you have that training and you have the gap, you're gonna lose a lot of that anyway.
So your thought is to train both Public Health and everyone within the courthouse system on the same day?
Oh, no, there'll be more than one day. It's just the scheduling of Mike to be able to do that out, out a little bit further.
Okay. I was just curious as to if we could have done some of the courthouse individuals on the 17th, taken advantage of that, and if there's any hiccups, then we would know that when you get to Public Health. That was a, like, concern.
But yeah.
So the date of the new training is what?
Twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth, correct. Oh, no, that's May.
Don't look at that. We haven't flipped that in a while.
July, it is twenty-fourth, if you're counting Thursday.
Right. Yeah, okay. Just doesn't that much matter? So, yeah, but I got that cleared with Laura too, so I think it's a better plan to make sure everybody can remember what the phones do.
One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you signed anything with the management agreement with Solutions that was due to either?
I have not signed, I have not received the document back from them in regards to the discount that I, that I requested from, from Solutions. So I talked to Mike, which is Mike who I generally work with with Solutions before, about the contract. I told him that, I think we went over it in the meeting, the changes that I wanted in the document. He forwarded me to a gentleman named Chad, who was the customer success manager or something for Harris, and he's the one who actually does the, goes to the board or whatever he says to be able to get those discounts I requested put into the document. So that's currently where I'm waiting. I talked to him yesterday to get that going. They're supposed to be here today. But I've kind of waited for that, for that communication to go back and forth and see that new contract. But it's no, yeah, we've changed the due date of that until after I get the new contract. So we're not currently losing any, we're kind of in the transition period of not losing any of our services.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Any more questions?
And did he say when he was gonna get back to you?
He did not say, no. But I'm gonna knock on that door every single day.
Okay, good deal.
But that's the best I can do.
Okay.
As soon as I have it, you will know.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other department head?
I have a question for Jenny. Have you heard of Fox River Mills is closing?
So there's nothing official, so there's no information officially from Fox River. However, with that said, they have told their employees that they are closing and stuff, so as soon as I have the official news, I will let all of you know. And then we will definitely, like, step in and provide support to those employees out there that are impacted.
I heard in two weeks, they're gonna be out of here. Would that be true?
There's a lot of rumors, so I will, like I said, I mean, when I hear officially from Fox River, Fox River hasn't announced this, so once I hear from them officially, I will let you know, and then I'll start planning a line, so things that we can do and should do.
Thank you.
I'll add to that. I just talked to a very close relation that works there, and yesterday afternoon, and I asked her, and it looks more like into August that they'll start. If you, yeah, there's a lot of, but starting, well, it's August.
Which, two weeks, about.
So I anticipate that I'll know in the next week or two, so probably by the end of July, I'll know some for sure stuff that I can share with you guys. Until then, yeah, there's lots of stuff going around, and I think the biggest thing is people are like, where are you gonna help? And then, yes, of course, we're gonna help, we can get a job fair going, we can provide some job teaching skills. I've already reached out to our partners, our workforce development, and they're prepared, ready, and able to help us one time.
Anything else for department head? County engineer.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just a couple of quick updates is all. The piling still continues to be driven on the bridge south of McIntyre's. That project is still going as scheduled. Talked to the consultants the other day. I asked them what the schedule's like, even with the, they're still unscheduled. Things are really not whack there yet. And then also, I got a phone call yesterday. Contractor wants to move in early next week and start doing removals on our truck route, the detour to 845 pavement, and then maybe start paving on the 28th of July. So, of course, schedules are subject to change, but that's the most, the most current information I have right now on the paving project. Yeah, but anything else you have to say questions on?
Can you say that again, what date's moving in?
Next week, they wanna do removals of the intersections, any pavement removals. They will remove the pavement, like, at 2:18 on Highway 9. Then they'll put rock fillers back in, so traffic can continue to travel through there until they mobilize the paper, which will probably be in the middle of 20. That should be a quick in and out project. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number seven, second consideration of ordinance number 62, entitled and ordinance mending the Mitchell County zoning ordinance, ordinance number 17, regarding provisions regulating commercial wind energy conversion systems and battery energy storage systems. Don't have to have a public hearing, so.
I do have some questions for John, and mine are relating to pages 12 and 14. I've had some, some individuals that are possibly interested in, in signing a windmill contract. However, it states that the site plan illustrates 1,800 feet for seawax structures from dwellings. And then on number seven, it states 1,800 feet to public conservation. Then when you flip to page 14, which says, and actually 13 starts that, citing safety design, following minimum standards shall be required, except as otherwise provided in this ordinance. Setbacks shall be regulated, and it mentions seawax and turbines. And it, on the table on page 14, it states dwellings, occupied buildings, the greater of 1,450 or 210% times the total height, and for public conservation or recreation, it's a half a mile, which is not 1,450, and it's not 1,800 as on page 12. So what is the, the conflict because that individual said, now, am I supposed to do 1,450, or am I supposed to do 1,800?
Sure. So on page 14, that's actual setback requirements that we've established for the ordinance draft right now. Although they have the option to sign a waiver for less than that for dwellings specifically down to 1,000 feet. And then for the site plan, that's just what is required to be illustrated. So the 1,800 feet is a little bit greater, obviously, than setback requirement, but that's just to kind of illustrate what's kind of young near swelling. That's to help the reviewer to kind of catch anything that.
That's on the fringe.
Yeah, that they just may not be aware of. That's just an aid that the reviewer will say, yeah, the distance for public conservation areas doesn't quite go to the half mile that we have to be requiring, so.
Right.
That doesn't match, so.
That doesn't match, so that's, you know.
Yep, that was oversight, so.
Okay. That we need to correct? Yeah, 'cause if their site illustration's only looking at 18, and they're looking at half a mile, you're, you're talking a considerable number of feet difference, okay?
So is that something substantial enough that we'd have to correct with an updated?
I think so. If you start, I'm not trying to throw a barrier in here, but if you start talking about things like this, changing those things like that, I think that would be a substantial, not big, but.
And like this, the spelling errors that we've got in there now. So I guess my question is, yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission spent a great deal of time going through this, as far as that's concerned. The final copy is, is presented from your office, is that right? Because I don't believe that Amanda, you know, in her position, was making changes and updates to the, to the ordinance, or maybe Amanda can speak to that.
Yeah, I was working really closely with John, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we approved it all the whole time, like, 40-page documents. We have to do a lot of this and things like that, typically typos or something that are, like, Aaron was saying, substantial enough that you could just correct without having to go through another reader, another public hearing, but we have all these things.
Okay. I'm just asking the question. I had several people ask that.
Yes, we, we worked through it. Mission, obviously, helped.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. They spend an awful lot of time on it.
Spelling errors can be, those can be fixed.
Yeah, I had asked Aaron if we could at least address that, because it doesn't change the nature of the, of the ordinance itself.
Yeah, and there's a couple options. You could approve a document to get it in place and then do a minor amendment later, or you can, you have the option to remand it back to the commission by motion as well for, for your study. It would go through the public hearing process at that point.
So, so at this point, we would have to update it, send it back to the Planning and Zoning to do their final approval again. Is that correct?
They'd have to go through.
Right, which we.
So they'd have to, like, have another public hearing, and we'd have to have another public hearing.
Right.
And that would send us back a whole nother month ahead.
Yeah, you could get it.
But you can't put things out there that.
You have to do some of those corrections thereafter. I'm not gonna charge you anything for doing those corrections.
I would certainly hold no. Yeah, that's.
I don't know what the process is as far as anything in ordinance. I am not sure. It was still a public hearing, but at least have, like, the ordinance in place, so that's your give and take of that situation.
Why would we put an, an ordinance in place that has some, some issues? And I'm not talking just the spelling errors.
So I think.
And can we expedite the, the process as far as, you know?
I think, so typically, it's not that unusual to have spelling errors, grammatical errors, and things like that. But this can be, most of the time, what you're gonna see are those kind of errors corrected between the first and second considerations. I guess I'm not aware you can't do it between the second and third considerations. Just normally hear about it between the first and second, although I guess if, if somebody were to pass a motion today to correct spelling errors, that'd probably take care of the issue. But for the other things, you know, when you're talking about distances, again, I'm not a wind technology person, so I mean, I may be completely misunderstanding this, but if you're talking, you know, it's kind of like saying, oh, you can't do this within a radius of five miles, and then somebody changes and says, well, no, we're gonna change it to two. You're like, well, that's not just a numerical change, that's a pretty substantial change. So start talking about distances and things like that. I, I don't think you can just simply amend that, like, here today. I think either, like I said, like John said, pass, you can continue forward with this as is, correct some spelling errors, and then make some changes later on, or start from the drawing board, which, like you said, is gonna be a pretty drawn-out process.
Just a question. So the, the suggestion was to move, for the center of the site, and to include a distance of the half mile, right, to be consistent with the setback?
I think the thing is that when people are looking at your contract, and, and it was someone that was looking at the contract, and I said, well, the windmill people were fine with the, with the setbacks, and I remembered the half a mile on the conservation side in the discussions at the final Planning and Zoning hearing. And so I said, well, it's a half a mile, but then they, they said, well, wait a minute. You know, it says 1,800 feet here on both things, and here it's different. And, you know, I understand now, so I can explain, that it's the illustration on, on page 12, and, and the actual measurements that they need to be looking at on their tract of land is 1,450 from their building site and half a mile from conservation. But the challenge is that you have a legal document that's conflicting information, and that's, you know, I brought those questions forward because they were brought to me from someone who's considering possibly signing, you know, an agreement.
From a practical standpoint, like, if, say you approved this, you know, as it was, like, if a application didn't come in before you had a chance to amend it, Amanda always has the option to be like, hey, did you make your site plan to illustrate that to a half a mile? So I would say it's relatively moot as, as being a important matter as far as, like, being able to get the information you need to be in review, because this is just the site plan. And typically, you know, the administrator can request additional information as needed, and that would be additional information. So that can be, you know, managed without such substantial changes until you have a chance to correct it as far as a minor amendment.
So the, the site plan illustration has nothing to do with the individual that's signing the contract themselves? Correct? Yeah, that part, that part I get. I think what's upsetting to, to many is the fact that we did spend almost three years in, in this. process, and Amanda?
Yeah. Yeah, so I just want to point out, like, the cost expense that it will take to start this whole process over, just the public hearing notice to the papers from my office this last time cost them more $700. So that's another aspect that I would just like to point out in that process is, like, I personally would lean towards putting this draft in and then doing an amendment later just from a cost standpoint.
Do you still have to put it in the paper if it's an amendment?
No.
Correct, right? It's, yeah, so your cost is going to be the same whether you fix it and do it right now or whether you sign or do it later, correct? Am I mistaken there? Because you are doing an amendment to an ordinance.
It would be a lot of cost because when I helped prepare that, I made it very thorough, so section by section, we could shorten that. I suppose in a second round, I can show you what I came up with, Aaron.
So you would be just correcting that page, so to speak?
Yeah, and any other minor things that we'd like to change. So that could be considered as, or if you wanted to run it through. I did, I did it more thorough summary, just as a matter of just making sure people are aware of what is all in it. What I went through.
And I could have asked John to shorten that up, but I would even transparency through my office as much as possible, so that's why I went around what I did, like agreeing with having it be as lengthy and as thorough as possible, so...
I think maybe the challenge may have been that at all the Planning and Zoning hearings, and I understand that Planning and Zoning Commission is a different situation, but maybe, you know, hindsight's always better. We should have allowed some public comments and some public input at that point. Maybe that would have eliminated some of this. I don't know that it would have. Just, I'm just putting that comment out there because it was also put, you know, to me, so...
Which number are we looking at, and which page now? Who would I be?
So on page 12, the numbers that are in conflict is number seven, D7, and on page 14, the public recreation and conservation, both of those numbers stay to half a mile.
Okay, I follow that. But which number are we discussing to change? Are we discussing?
It would be the one on page 12.
Are we discussing the 1800 or the one that's on the actual setback requirement?
The actual setback requirement has to be less than what's on page 12. So the one on page 12 would have to reflect at least a half a mile.
So on page 12, the 1800 would turn into a half a mile?
It would have to be at least a half a mile, and if you're requesting more, then you would have to, which is what you did in number six.
Okay.
And I'd like to say that the public conservation area setback was setback requirement was suggested from my minor, because that's not my department. So I personally wouldn't think that changing the actual setback on page 14 would make much sense. Changing the setback, or the site plan requirement would be a more feasible option since that is what Mike suggested of the setback requirement on page 14.
Well, your setback requirement is a half a mile, is what, right, for actual building purposes. But you're saying that the site plan is more so that they can check if there's anything on the fringes. So that's what I'm asking, would you then make it more than a few more feet than a half a mile so that you can see if there's a recreation? If you're following the same suit as number six?
Yeah, probably.
Right. A few extra feet, yep.
Would there be a number changed in the actual setback requirement?
No.
That stays the same?
That's...
It's just the site plan.
From a standpoint of that publication comes in.
It's just a change to the site plan that would have to be submitted to my office.
Well, I just think, just moving on, we could do simple corrections of the ordinance at a later date. Aaron talked about substantial and non-substantial corrections in it. The spelling can be just considered non-substantial as far as he's concerned, so that can just be done. A substantial portion of it is just what we discussed, is this 1800, this...
Correct.
1800 feet, half-mile number. So that could be done with the end of part of locations. It would be just more or less that item, 3D, I think is what it is, 3D A.
Eight, or seven.
What we're actually doing that way, so there'd be a much simpler way of doing this.
Yeah.
What's a...
That'd be...
Yes. Well, I don't want to get out of my realm here. It might, I guess I'd be interested in what anybody else thinks, but based on what we're talking about, it might be better to move it along the way it is and then change something later. I think that might be better than just starting over. Mostly, I say that, I, you start talking about cost and all that, that's a little hard to say. But just from kind of a time perspective, I think the public kind of wants something to move forward, so...
I don't dispute that.
It just says the one, so...
What's that?
I think it would be different if this name was littered with different things that were incorrect, but I would do one item here. What do you hear about those suggestions that gentleman made last week? Any of those? So I've looked at those, and my thought and my opinion is, and I'll use that word, everybody has an opinion on how they think the document should read. There are opinions, and there are errors. And I'm not going to say those opinions are bad opinions, but we had the zoning commission look this over, and I'm going to respect a lot of their thought as far as what they put into this and their opinion. So I'm negating that individual a lot, but those are opinions that that individual had.
Any other? Do we have a motion to go on to read number?
I would move to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 62 with spelling errors, non-substantial spelling errors to be corrected.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Five seconds. Any further discussion? We'll call Sidney. Bye. Pam.
Nate.
Todd.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Mark.
No.
Motion passes. Number eight, discussion and possible action on north Iowa local workforce development area.
I can talk on this a little bit, I guess. I made a map. So they want to combine the eastern sections as the one group, just like Iowa Plains, and then there'll be three sections in Iowa, the central Iowa, and then the eastern side. They were meeting a month ago, they brought up the idea of combining all the eastern side together to have more input and consolidate some expenses, and consensus of the people at the meeting were to go forward with it, then they have to bring it to each colony supervisors, so they okay it or deny it, and then we'll move forward from then. So this is the next step to combine those districts. So, I mean, she's sent the pros of why this matters and all that that she got to pack. So that's the next step, I guess, if we okay it.
I have some questions, and you probably won't have the answers for it, Mark, because it's more or less maybe somebody that's actually sitting in the seat of Iowa Workforce Development, but in their talking points, generate a question from it, and so I wrote down, does reconfiguration mean some counties do not have individuals sitting on the board? Something there gave me that thought.
Yeah, I don't know about that, because each county has a person on the committee, so they would still have representation.
Currently, or would the change be that way that it wouldn't be?
Currently, we have it, and I'm sure it's going to stay the same, because they wouldn't want to not be represented.
Here's the sentence, it says, while some administrative rules and local board structures may be reconfigured as part of the merger process, counties will continue to play a central role in decision-making. Some of the reconfiguration, anyway.
So how is Iowa Plains laid out, do we know now? Is there a representative from every one of those counties? Because that's a substantial board.
Yeah.
You know, that's a lot of, that vote takes a long time.
Yeah.
I just wonder, is this, I don't know the answer, but if the state is doing this because maybe Iowa Workforce Development got to be too top-heavy on the administrative side, and they're actually trying to change that, and so is this merger just one of the things that everybody's going to be able to keep their job? I don't know that.
Yeah, because they get funds from the federal government, and they're getting cut 25% of their budget, so they thought they'd be more streamlined if they merged.
They'd have a larger voice if it was half of this, or this half of the state and that half of the state, and then, of course, the central Des Moines area.
Yeah, and you can see the central...
Population.
Yeah, central Iowa doesn't want it, because they have power now, equal, close people if they all merge.
Right. Now, you are a voting member, right? And you'll continue as far as you know?
Yeah.
So you said something that used me in, so since Des Moines has more power, by some of this merger, we'll have more seats at the table to maybe offset that power.
That's a good thinking, yeah.
Okay.
That made more sense to me after you explained that.
I'll make a motion to go along with the merger.
I second that.
Mark made a motion. James second. Any further discussion? We'll call Mark.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Sidney.
Hi.
Motion passes. Approved treasurer semi-annual report. Good morning, Jim.
Not going to go over all, I just thought I'd be here to get questions. I did want to point out, for the first page that Rachel signed, I did just notice, I think she put the date on wrong cell, so that second line should say treasurer said county had to close all of business. That date, I show them by my account in hand from my office, I will change that. The last line, the second-to-last line down there, I thought the date was over some of the verbiage, so I will just have that correct. I want you to sign something accurate, Rachel. Anybody have any questions? It's pretty much laid out, closets and transit is pretty much all the interest, CD column, checks outstanding, and then the treasurer's balance matches the report that's attached.
And everything that flipped from the last day of last year, June 30th, to July 1st matches. Yes. They were talking that several of them that are on the other program...
Tyler?
Yeah, that have Tyler had.
Tyler's had some issues.
A lot of issues.
As far as we can tell, a lot of little confirmants.
Good, yeah.
I did, Janelle prepares it, and then I go over it and make sure that we're all matching. Our numbers matched. We thought they should have.
Their motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? We'll call Jim.
Hi.
Sidney.
Bye.
Pam.
Hi.
Mark.
Right.
Tom.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Number 10, discussion and possible action on funding Stacyville Kids Care.
So I'm just going to report a little bit of information from the Stacyville Kids Care side of things and their fundraising. They are working on getting more grants. They've applied for four, they're going to apply for another one. The large one that they were thinking of possibly applying for, there's a lot of hurdles that would eliminate local contractors or be quite hindering to their timeline because of a lot of the government fund grants now are requiring made in the U.S. be a very large portion of your input. So larger contractors have forms where they, you have this many screws, and you have to have a certificate that accompanies, dado, I believe, is what it's called, and it accompanies each of those purchases. It's challenging to go to some of the local lumber yards and whatnot and have them make sure that they have all these certificates in place. There's several steps that have to be followed to hoops to get through to apply for one of the grants. Jenny was at their meeting last night along with myself, and so that was, that was pretty discouraging for the team as far as that's concerned, that the one larger grant that they wanted to apply for may be more hindrance than help at this time. They are on a time crunch because they need to show some progress because of concerns coming forth in the next review from the fire marshal. So they already have 28 kids, I believe, on their waiting list, five people on their waiting list that want to work there, which is an awesome thing. And so from that standpoint, they're continuing their fundraising efforts, but we're going to need to try to move ahead sooner than later. So that's, that's my report on them. The question is, the question is, from my standpoint, can we indeed take these funds from local option sales tax as opposed to running them through a TIF program? The board did approve the Stacyville Kids Care parcel last night to be named a urban renewal parcel, and they have submitted their economic impact statement. So from that standpoint, that part of it is complete. I guess I'm asking for some discussion on possibly using funds out of the local option sales tax account or fund as opposed to the TIF, using TIF funds. So any thoughts on that as far as that's concerned?
I would like to use local option sales tax rather than go through the TIF part of it. That's where I'm sitting.
And last week, or the week before, I'm thinking we need to do all these projects that we've been talking about, and local option sales tax would be a great internal loan to do everything.
Okay.
We're looking at four to six weeks for this process to get things rolling. We're looking at four to six weeks for this process to get things rolling. It's not like it's a year out, but we're going to have money for them in four weeks, six weeks, so.
Okay. I was thinking that last year, the TIF process took a considerable amount of time and it could be because you're using a different, you're using Danos this time. Is that correct or?
We used Danos last time.
Okay, I was thinking.
At the workshop, he said this, like, he said it was a four week process, but four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks.
The mayor of Stacyville sat in these chairs and told us that he wanted us to use TIF money to fund this project.
Right.
So that is what I'm going to go with.
Okay. Okay, I just brought it forth, asking about a different consideration. The challenge that we have with TIF that we need to be aware of is that your two TIF districts that take the biggest hit to their school districts are St. Ansker and Riceville because they're the districts with the windmills that are generating those funds. So the largest amount of that money, here's what will happen or can possibly happen. So let's say that they reduce the rollback to the schools, which they are strongly considering. And we're foolish to put blinders on and pretend like this might not happen. So if they reduce the rollback in conjunction with the 2% levy that they're going to reduce to the two school districts that massively get hurt in this process using TIF dollars are St. Ansker and Riceville. Osage will be all right because Osage has very little TIF district money. The two that are going to be screaming hurt and the questions you're going to have to answer are the St. Ansker School District and the Riceville District massively hurt. So we need to ask ourselves this question now. Barb maybe has some input on.
I would say Osage will still take a small pit.
Yeah.
But she's not wrong in the fact that we've allowed this to happen and it's okay. But if this backfill thing happens, there is hundreds of thousands of dollars to the two districts she's talked about.
Right.
And those are things that aren't easily made up when each child is worth $8,000.
And we have to be cognizant of, of the impact. I'm not opposed to growing our county. I'm absolutely for it. And funding daycares, absolutely I'm for it. I'm wondering if maybe for the Stacyville daycare right now, we can take $300,000 out of our local option sales tax and we can provide some more assistance perhaps next year from that standpoint, provide some funds.
Don't they need the $600,000?
They will need, because we backed off on the 125, they're at about 238 that they've raised. Those people are going after every penny they can find. But we also have to be, yeah, I'm in a tough spot. I'm not going to kid you because quite honestly, that daycare has a lot of passion in my heart because I helped start the initial daycare in 1986. So I'd like to say, let's use some TIF money and let's spend $600,000 and give it to the Stacyville daycare in the form of TIF dollars and let's not worry about our school kids. But I don't think we can responsibly do that. You know, we have a large industry that is going to lose employees. So I think we need to back the truck up just a little bit and ask ourselves, can we be responsible in our spending now as opposed to an open checkbook? We are not a bank. Although the daycares do a wonderful thing about keeping people in our communities and building employee bases because people come when there's daycare. Daycare is huge. It's huge across the state without a doubt. But I'm just asking, can we take an alternative look at how we plan to help as opposed to TIF funding and possibly, very, very possibly drastically hurting two school districts?
We are very responsible with our funding and we do not have an open checkbook. When this became a five-member board, we corrected some of those problems. So we have been very responsible and though we are not a bank, we've never insinuated ourselves to be a bank. So also, the legislature proposed massive tax, property tax reform this last session under the governor's recommendation to have it happen and they didn't get it done.
Yeah.
So I plan to work with the programs that are sitting in front of me to try to make the county better. And I could always say, what if the legislature does this? What if the legislature does that? No, I don't, I don't have blinders on, but I'm also not going to just sit in one spot because I'm afraid of what the legislature's going to do. I'm going to use what's here and hopefully there's a majority of this board that does it also. But speaking for myself, I'm going to use the programs that are sitting in front of me to try to improve the county. If those programs change, then things will have to change by all means.
The challenge there is that once you, once you use that TIF, then that debt carries through. I also look at debt ratios, you know, and I'm accustomed to looking at cash flows beyond 12 months or beyond six months as, as I think many individuals, as I'm sure you are as well. And so I'm just asking, who's going to answer the questions? Because that TIF debt is TIF debt for 10 years.
No.
No?
No. When we started this process, we did 50 miles of road. First time it was a $9 million bonding process and two years later it was a $13 million bonding process. Those were long-term repayment processes.
Correct, yep.
What we have done this last time was an internal loan for $1.6 million that was paid back within a year, I believe. And then the $2.4 million outside funding, which was done through a local bank, which is great that they did this for us. We kept the money in the county. I believe that was a two or two and a half year process. So we are doing short-term loans for what we've been doing.
And the challenge with the last, the one last year is you took four libraries that are part of your annual budget and you stretched that expense out a year or two because we had to do that in order to meet the library budgets. Is that right? Because we TIF district the four libraries.
We did an internal loan process to fund the libraries.
Correct.
Along with economic development. So we paid their wages by borrowing money.
We did it through an internal loan of ourselves by borrowing money. So we borrowed money to pay wages and that, and that fund ended up getting interest paid to it for what we did.
I'm just asking for us to be aware and to take a look at possibly other options.
I'm worthy on that. I'd rather use local option sales tax and fund it that way rather than borrow. I'll make a motion to take $300,000 out of local option sales tax for the Stacyville daycare.
Oh, if you're, you have a resolution on this because there's a resolution page where it's going to wait until it gets approved.
That resolution, if you want to use it, 129925.
So you need to correct your motion?
For resolution 129925?
And how much?
300.
Mark made a motion?
I second it.
Pam, second. Any further discussion?
We'll call Todd.
No.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
No.
Jim.
No.
Did not pass. Discussion on possible action on funding Riceville Kids Care.
So in lieu of the fact that Riceville has some folks here, I think, so can you guys sit down in the chairs up there?
I used to be on the side of the table.
Yeah.
We have some handouts and stuff too, so.
Yep, we've asked them to come.
The print is some stuff on. You got the print outs ready or do you want another handout?
We would not definitely be able to use TIF dollars for Riceville.
We're well aware, so.
Yeah, because they, they're aware of that.
We know that has about 1.7 million in local option sales tax available. We haven't come to this point because the Riceville Community Schools is very proud of what we're doing. We've done a lot of major renovations on lots of things, including taking over the daycare. When the community daycare came to us and said, we are going to fold. It was housed out of the school at that time, it kind of ran separately. In Kim Brook and our numbers have totally changed. And we went from 32 students back in 2021 up to 115 kids today on our roster. It's a true success story. A year ago in December, the board had some really hard choices between a new kitchen and a new daycare. We could not afford both, so we chose the kitchen project, which is coming to fruition. But last fall, we are aware of a grant from the state of Iowa. And so we worked with the state on this and applied for this grant. We fundraised $822,000 worth of pledges and that's mostly, mostly been gathered already. But we can get from up to the state up to a $1.1 million match. And we need to get to that $1.1 million to maximize all of that dollars. And it's been a wonderful economic development tool. We now have, you know, we are on the other side of the county and I know that's a barrier for us. But a majority of our people are on this side of the county. We have all the data in that packet to show who's working where, how many kids go where. We've attacked businesses on each side. And I do know that the city of Riceville is part of the Mitchell County Economic Development. They did not join Howard County. We're also going to the city of Riceville and Howard County for our ask with this because again, we are in full blown mode. This building has to be built up and running 100% by the end of June of next year as part of the federal grant stipulations. We've met and jumped all the hoops. We were really lucky that in December, like I said, we went on our million dollar match month and for that community to raise and do what we did was pretty awesome. So we feel confident that again, we're part of the solutions fund with the workers. Thanks Jenny, because she's done a great job in administering that. And Mitchell County has kept us as part of that as well. So again, our ask would be the same thing for $300,000 out of the sales tax. Because again, it's a great use of that funds. It's something that would be doubled. So that's what would be beautiful. Your 600, that would turn into 600,000. That would help complete the project with the playground, everything like that. So any money that we get now that we're still fundraising and writing grants for, we're out there actively fundraising at WOxy Days, we're doing a big fundraiser. I mean, there's a lot of different things going on, but we've come to you because again, we need to get our playground and stuff done and that's, it's great. We have a new housing subdivision across the street. The nursing home is there, the new clinic. So there's a lot of great things going on in our small town of Riceville, even though we're right on the county line. So before I keep talking, Brooke, is there things you'd like to add?
I don't think so, other than just the expansion of both the school and the daycare is wonderful, but means we need more space. So actually, as we speak, our staff is emptying one of our classrooms and it's going to be a kindergarten classroom. So now we have to go from six rooms down to five rooms. So that is hard. So the, being able to see the new build happen is very promising and exciting for us because we'll finally kind of have our own space.
As far as the quality, she is part of the IQ 4K, which is one of the highest quality readings that a daycare can get. And that's because again, of all the PD and the activities they've done. So it's the daycare that's going to be around for a while. We are, they have to be solvent because they're under the school umbrella because they're run by us, but it's a separate enterprise fund for them. So again, we are doing everything we can for economic development on that part of the county. And we're really proud of what we're doing. We're here to ask today because I do know back, several years back, that we did give money to a couple of their daycares that were in our county as well. So we were hoping at some point that we could come and ask as well.
And Riceville, you know, because it's on the, on the border there, sometimes I feel like we get lost. Do we go to Howard? Do we go to Mitchell? Where do we go? And, you know, I went through where all our families live and where all of our families work. And we're almost 50/50, Mitchell versus Howard. So we're very equal on both sides.
I appreciate you putting that together. That really worked. Thank you.
Well, and it's been interesting as we've done our fundraising and as we've gone out and asked for donations, people want to know the data and it's good as we have helped a lot of other daycares around the state get started and working on getting more daycares put into school settings or helping that out. So it's, it's been a process and Brooke's a big part of that. But again, today we'd like to ask, again, we realize budgets are tight everywhere. What Pam said about the TIF isn't to scare anybody. It's just, it was probably four years ago, we really thought it was happening, going to happen. Todd was probably on the Osage Board at the time and we were prepared for that. You know, we knew exactly how much money each one of the districts was potentially going to lose at that point. I agree, I don't want to live in fear, but I also realize the harsh reality is it's going to happen. They're gonna, you know, look at doing this. But daycare and childcare is also one of the governor's priorities.
Yeah.
So she wants tax reform, but she also wants the daycare and childcare so that our families that need to work can continue to work, so.
What's the construction cost of the project?
1.8 million. So if you look at the pictures on, you guys have this one, right? So it's 1.8 million for the actual addition and the renovations that are happening there.
Right.
So again.
And you've raised 800,000, is that what you said?
Yeah, 822 in pledges and money raised.
So for some grants, they match based on type of business contributions. So does this one match in regards to government contributions?
Absolutely. It's just money in, money out.
Okay.
So this was extra money coming back from basically COVID or money that wasn't used by others and people that couldn't meet the demand. So there was another batch of this given out because again, the money is already sitting here. We were really nervous the whole time with different cuts to funds and grants that this isn't going to happen anymore. But the flip side is we have all the documentation and letters saying, no, the money's been sitting in Des Moines for a long time and the governor wants this spent on it, so.
When's the grant deadline?
What?
When's the grant deadline? I mean, when does it?
Wait, we have to spend the first money. We have to put all the money in and then the second chunk comes from the state. So we're trying to get as much money raised as possible. So everything has to be wrapped up by the end of June of next year.
Okay, you did say that.
Yep. June 30th of next year, it has to be up and running, open, all that, bills paid, that's everything. And we're on target. So if you were to drive by the Riceville school today, you would see the footings board, construction crews out there working on it. Because again, we're going to figure out how to do this, just like the passionate people at Stacyville or St. Ansker or here in town at Osage. If there's a will, there's a way to get this done. Again.
In regards to school, city and Howard County and Mitchell County contributions, where is everybody at with?
So they did not help us with solutions funds because again, they have their needs with Alma, Lime Springs, Fresco has the Big Kessel kids.
They being?
They being Mitchell County Economic, or excuse me, Howard County Economic. So we haven't gone back to ask again because it was a no there. But we have been in contact with Dean Neesman, who is the Howard County, Mitchell, or Howard County Economic Supervisors. So we'll be going there to get on their agenda to do the same sort of thing and asking there. And then we'll get on the Riceville City Council. So those are our other asks that we're going to.
Okay, when are you going to do that?
When we have time to do it. So hopefully here in June or July, or excuse me, July or August, yeah, before school starts.
I'd also like to bring up, I did ask Chris from NICOG last night if it was possible for Stacyville to tap into something as wonderful as you were able to. And his comment was, that was leftover funds, that's gone, that's no more and, you know.
We got very luckier blessed, one of the two because we were shuttle ready. So we had our plans ready to go. And so when we were able to submit this grant, we were farther ahead because we had X amount of dollars fundraised and that's how they came up with the appropriation of the 1.1 million that we could ask for as a max. Because they looked at our plans and they looked at everything. So literally it's by the time we send them. Literally, it's by the time it's done.
I would be curious what's your other funding sources coming, coming in as far as what their interest is, mainly Howard County. I don't want Mitchell County to be the sole contributor to this project because as the data you showed, it's basically a 50/50 thing as far as families have attended. And I'm not saying I'm against this, but I don't want to be the sole contributor either.
Understandable.
Between the two counties.
And what we don't want to happen is both counties say this. Because as Brooke said, is sometimes we feel like...
But as you, as you say, I'm not against this. So I'd like to hear them say something to that, but also.
We have a resolution here. Rachel, what number is that?
So the next number up is the 1299-25.
Guess we didn't use that one. So I move that we provide $150,000 to the Riceville Little Cats Daycare, Resolution Number 1299-25 out of local option sales tax.
Oh, is that?
Oh, are you just, you're just doing half?
Right. Well, I think that...
So I mean, in all fairness, yes, it must get doubled if we got one there.
If Howard, I'm hoping, and I had done some reaching out and haven't gotten a response back from their board of supervisors. If Howard, my thought was they needed about 300,000 and we could split that, you know, and the...
Okay. That's all I needed.
Right. So that's where I was coming up with the 150,000.
Pam made a motion. Mark second. Any further discussion?
So, go ahead, Todd.
So, uh, basically this motion is we're going to, if it passes, give them 150,000.
Contract for services agreement for 150,000.
And that 150,000 is not available. I mean, we could tell substantial completion. Is that correct?
That was my question, too.
Yeah, that's normally what we do, right? I give it to them right away.
If I could do a budget amendment?
There's, there's questions, or we've done substantial completion for a reason. The reason being is that if the government fronts money up to a developer, when there's a project that is started, the developer needs to know exactly where they're at with their money, their plans, everything. If the government fronts the money up, and I know you have that, I'm getting that. If the developer, if the government fronts money up to begin with, there's a very good chance that the project, and I'm not gonna say this is happening with you. This is just in general. If we front it up at the beginning, there could be problems during the construction. And then all of a sudden, the developer says, I ran out of money and this project has not been completed. And now we have a shell sitting there. And then they come back to the government saying, you know, this is going to be an ISO or it's not usable for anything else. We need more money from you. So we've always done substantial completion because they need to have everything in line before they come to us. And by all means, yep, we're going to help you. But when you get it done, that's when we're going to issue the money. So that is what's important about the substantial completion part of it.
You mean like last project we did?
Right.
Which one was that?
The Maple Inn.
That was substantial completion.
They were substantially completed because we discussed giving them some money before it was substantially completed.
We discussed that, but we did not do that. Rock Waters came to us and said, it is substantially complete. And Landscape Partners, who was, as far as, was part of that project, also said, it's substantially complete. But we did not front that money.
May I interject something?
Sure.
So what we're going to need the money is to get to that 1.19. So like I said, if we're at 822, and if we need that money, well, we'll be substantially getting closer to it. But before, we can tap into the state grant money because that's just the way this thing reads, is we have to spend our money first. So we would need that money to be part of the doubling pot. It's just the way the grant is written. So we're not trying to, I mean, as a school district and stuff, we're going to finish the building.
I get that. I understand that.
So, so I just want to make sure that your 150 can turn into the double.
Correct.
So I'm not saying we need it when it's done or we don't need it tomorrow. We would just need it at the point where we have to get to that magic number.
End of June 26.
It'll be before that because by, we, by, probably by January, February, we will have paid our million dollars upfront.
You're going to be in the building. When, when are you projecting that you'll be in the facility?
June of 2026 or probably May of 2026. Once school gets out. But we have to spend all of our money first. Then we get the money and we can draw off the million from the state. So like I said, we're, we've got footings, bro. We're playing, we're paying down on that money that we have already.
I guess we had talked, and I have mentioned about Mitchell County and Howard County. And I'm on a committee that I know a lot of going on in Howard County and they're tough hards to get anything out of.
But that's their responsibility, correct? I mean, that's your job.
That's us to do. I lived there for 50 years. So yeah, we're working on our connections and what we can do with them. So again, that has nothing to do with you. And so like what Pam did is by saying, hey, instead of giving you the whole, if you have to go get some from them. If we're split 50/50 with where our people live, the school and that.
That's my dream thought.
To me, that made good sense. Because again, that gives us more, we're, we're happy to get any money at this point. Because again, it's, it's a tough, even fundraising is getting tougher, as you all know, as the economy gets tighter.
Any other discussion? Recall Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
The motion and the second were who?
Pam and Mark.
I moved it.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate you hearing us today and listening. And if you have more questions, let us know.
What a great project. What a wonderful group.
Blessing.
Your blessing.
It's our blessing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Discussion on possible action on Carpenter Community Club request. So, you know how much? Am I not ready to go?
500, isn't it? The same as...
A number of years ago, we gave them 500.
Isn't that what we've been giving every?
I don't think we've given it.
We have.
I don't think we've... Do you have a number?
The reason you didn't do Carpenter was because they haven't had that barbecue bash like they've had, they had for several years. Then the last couple of years, I want to say, they, they stopped that project and now they're...
We're doing a two band, two bands for folk fest?
Last time I have them done was in 21, 22, it was $500.
Yes.
So this would be Resolution 1300-25 for $500? Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 1300-25, contract for services with the Carpenter Community Club, wherein they will be providing entertainment and activities for people within that community to draw together $500 to the Carpenter Community Club.
Second.
Pam made a motion, and Jim second. Any further discussion? Recall Jim.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd. Motion passes. Items of note, meetings attended?
I don't think I saw a meeting last night. I just went over to general business. It's pretty dense for a budget.
I had lots of extra meetings, but none of my actual committee meetings.
I met with Mike Minor and we went through the three proposed projects, the Interstate Park, the Hoverson Park, and the Otrano Park, and walked through those plans. He also talked about the July 23 open house type or open meeting for people to come and review the plans, review the layout, and provide any input, ideas, suggestions that they may have. So I want to be sure that people know that. I do know that he put the plans out there online, and I've had several comments on that. And other than that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mark. I actually did have a meeting, I had a Nycog meeting, about that last week. Two of them. It went pretty quick, actually. Sorry.
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
We had a heartland insurance meeting. We had to go to coal section, discuss two settlements on claims, election of officers, both for the budget. And they brought up the House File 706, which elected officials and people on boards have to take an hour or two course on Chapter 21 and 22 within those meetings. They're going to get with that Brad Henders to see what he comes up with because there is nothing out there to take yet. And it's supposed to be done in 90 days after June 6, so.
Yeah, I couldn't find anything. Did anybody else find anything? I couldn't, I looked all over and couldn't find anything out there yet.
Typical state thing they have you to do with. Got something to do and then they don't have a plan to do it, so.
Yes, right.
Just to let you guys know, so there's a new director that's going to be starting in Iowa Public Information Board. And so there, because I reached out as well, so they're just waiting for somebody new to start, like mid-July before they set up those trainings. So that's why maybe there isn't anything yet, so.
But they have 90 days to get this done.
You did yours down there.
Yeah.
Is that right?
They have that. But they don't know how you're going to enforce conservation laws. Those people have to take it. And they're volunteers. How are you going to make somebody that's a volunteer take it? They're not going to give people on those boards, home health, to be the same way?
Yeah.
Labor board, salmoning.
Everything, I mean, yeah, planning, you're planning and zoning.
They don't know how they can enforce that.
All of them.
So anyway.
Figuring? I got none, but I have a question that, did you, were they, are they thinking of zooming down? Or do we have to go somewhere?
No, they, they think of zooming because they'll get all these people. They get ahold of him and see what he finds out.
And there was a little quiz thing or whatever at the end, that kind of deal?
Yeah, probably.
Make sure that you, or that you got to the end and click that you took it. Otherwise, what was the point?
Mr. Manfred?
Larry Beeson Farm, 209 East State Line Street, Stacyville. Long South, initial farm, 4602, Shadow Avenue, Stacyville. And Emory Undero, 2633, 400th Street, Stacyville.
Public comments? Nothing today? All right.
So I would just like to make a comment for us to maybe think about and consider moving forward. Last week, St. Ansgar brought a sewer system proposal to us so that they could complete a building of several housing complexes. I'm doing more research into that. I've met with some folks on that and will have more to reply on that. But I think they brought a plan from the engineer of 595,000. I would just ask that we think in the next week of possibly funding some of that so that the, maybe the city has some other plans or they have other plans to do the rest. So that the, the real purpose of TIF is to, to raise property tax funds. And that indeed would raise some property tax funds and increase those TIF dollars. So just, just something to, to consider. That maybe part of that or a portion of that might be something for us to think about. Food for thought. That's all I have.
All right. I will bring the meeting at 9:55.
Is that public comments?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you had...
Well, I just had a question about the right-of-way ordinance. Have you followed it afterwards? And I had sent some information, just some comments.
Correct.
To Rich, and I didn't know if that number I should send him to.
Well, he's right behind you, so I think we'll give it to him.
Yeah.
I didn't, she showed me a document. I didn't receive it.
I had, yeah, I don't know that I received it.
Do I send it as a supervisor email?
Oh, okay. Yes, that's right. Yeah. So we are looking over any of the questions and concerns that were on the right-of-way. Some of the information that was stated last week was erroneous. And, and so I got phone calls and remarks from outside of the county on, on that situation. So we are answering the questions that any people have had or concerns. But, but our plan is to, I will openly state, to bring that back for consideration because many people in the county are concerned about the right-of-way ordinance.
Can I just give this copy to Rich then? Or do you want to send it to him? These were just, you know, comments about the right-of-way ordinance itself in terms of corrections or...
Okay. Thoughts? Yeah. Sure, sure.
Any more public comments?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I will, during the meeting at 9:55.